Thank you councillors, if we can all stand please. I'd like to welcome councillors and council staff, people in the gallery and people in the members of the community on livestream to this scheduled meeting of council today. Swan Hill Royal City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders, past and present. Councillor Kelly, the prayer or opening declaration please.
We the councillors of Swan Hill Royal City Council declare that we will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interests of our community and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us to the best of our skill and judgment.
Thank you. Please be seated. Before we get into the formalities of today's council, I think it's appropriate that we acknowledge the passing of Lee McFee, a valued member of our community, a past member of council staff and of course the wife of councillor Les McFee. And Les, we pass on our condolences to you and yeah, acknowledge it's been a tough time and but welcome you back into the chamber. And just wanted to recognise Lee's contribution to council and to the community over a number of years. Councillors, we have an apology from councillor Chris Jeffrey today. Have somebody to move that apology be received, councillor Kelly, second to councillor McKay, those in favour, carried. Directors and officers present to, sorry, we do have an, sorry, I'll need to amend that because we have an apology from
Senior Scott Barber.
From CEO Scott Barber. Councillor Kelly, you happy to accept that amendment? Thank you, oversight by myself. So to my left is Leah Johnson, who is acting CEO today, ordinarily in the role of Director of Infrastructure. Bruce Myers, Director of Cultural and Community Development, thank you. Ms Laura O'Dwyer, welcome as Acting Director of Infrastructure today. Michelle Granger, Director of Development and Planning and Barn Patat, Director of Corporate Services, welcome and thank you for your attendance. Minutes of the previous meeting have been circulated, do I have a mover for confirmation of those minutes? Somebody who was present, councillor Young, second to councillor Kelly, those in favour, minutes are carried, thank you. Any disclosures of conflict of interest for any items on the agenda today, councillors? If none, we can move forward with that. We have no joint letters or readings of petitions. So can I have a motion that standing orders be suspended for public question time, please? Move councillor Moore, second to councillor Kelly, those in favour, motion is carried, thank you. We have one question today from Paula Roger. The question is, I'll just read it as it's written, "Good afternoon councillors. Are all your council members aware and willing to support our SES in the campaign to bring the fire levy that the Victorian State Government currently has in place to be changed to an emergency services levy? Victoria is the only state government that does not support all emergency services in a levy. Our Vic State levy is for fire levy only. SES is the controlling agent for 74% of the state disasters and have no levy to fund it. Would love to talk more on this. SES is running a state campaign in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, which I believe is this week also." Acting CEO.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Paula for your question. Firstly, council is extremely grateful to the SES and all emergency responders for their work and volunteerism. On behalf of all of the community and council, the work that is done to protect us all when we're most in need is extremely appreciated. Personally, I'm not aware of any campaign to bring the fire levy that the Victorian State Government currently has in place to be changed to an emergency service levy. I'm not sure if the elected members are currently aware of this campaign either. However, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It is suggested that further discussions are now held with councillors at an assembly so that this issue was appropriately considered and your concerns are understood. Thank you.
Thank you Ms Johnson. Can I have a motion that standing orders be resumed? Councillor Moore, councillor McKay, those in favour, motion is carried, thank you very much. We have no open forum today, so we will move into section two of the Agenda Officer Reports for Decision. Agenda item 2.1, Private Assets in Road Reserves Policy, Ms O'Dwyer, thank you.
Thank you through you Mayor. This is a procedural report that seeks approval to renew council policy infrastructure 517, Private Assets in Road Reserves Policy without change. Council is often approached to allow the installation of private assets in council managed road reserves. In Swan Hill Royal City Council, these requests are most commonly related to irrigation infrastructure, but they can also extend to assets such as cattle underpasses or privately owned communication infrastructure. Maintenance obligations and responsibilities are imposed on all owners of infrastructure in the road reserve through the Road Management Acts 2004 and other acts. Most owners of infrastructure within the road reserves are service providers like council and public utilities that maintain insurance and regular inspection and maintenance regimes. The purpose of this policy and procedure is to provide a framework that is designed to balance social need and economic benefit of the installation of privately owned infrastructure against the ongoing protection of the roadway and ongoing public safety. The policy and procedure requires that a Section 173 agreement be entered into prior to the installation of private assets in the road reserve. A Section 173 agreement under the Planning Environment Act is a legally binding agreement between council and the landowner. A 173 agreement is tied to the property title, so ongoing, so is ongoing even if the property is sold and the agreement sets out the arrangements for the ongoing ownership and use of the asset, inspection works and maintenance requirements, public liability insurance and design considerations, including the location, depth, materials etc. The costs associated with the generation and application of the 173 agreement onto beneficiaries of the land title will be borne by the applicant. And council can at its discretion retain the right to terminate an agreement with a minimum of one month's notice and recover costs for non-compliance should the landowner fail to maintain the asset in good order. There have been no changes made to this policy or procedure since it was last approved by council in 2019. This has previously been discussed at assemblies, so the recommendation is as written, that council adopts the Private Assets in Road Reserve policy.
Thank you Ms O'Dwyer, any questions councillors?
I've just got a question, are there any issues?
Just your microphone, councillor Young please, thank you.
Are there any issues in the past related to any activities that are connected into this policy that would warrant a change to the, this policy?
The 173 agreements have really helped council to be able to keep on top of any issues that come ahead. If a culvert collapses or something like that, it means that we can approach the landowner and say, you need to fix it. We also maintain mapping of where they are so we know when something goes wrong, who is responsible for it. There have been issues in the past where things haven't had 173 agreements and council had then had to fix up the issue at our own cost, which then goes on to rate payers, so.
Okay, well I'd like to move that we pass this as per the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Young, move councillor Young. Have a second for that motion, councillor McKay, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Young?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, we don't need to change it, it's been before and approved by the staff, so I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you, and then I'll just get you to flick your microphone off councillor Young. Councillor McKay, do you wish to speak?
No, I'm happy with the policy as it stands.
Okay, are there any speakers against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour, motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item 2.2, Swan Hill Region Housing Action Plan 2024-2025, Ms Granger.
Councillors, I'm pleased to present to you today a housing action plan. Thank you.
A housing action plan based on outcomes from a housing summit that you held late last year. Housing Action Plan is a two-year document with a number of actions that we see will assist council and the community to address the shortfall in housing and rental accommodation across the Shire. It's not an issue that we are just basing on our own, it's an Australian-wide issue, but it calls for innovative solutions. We've come up with an action plan that looks at a range of activities that we can be involved in, that we can work with the community on, and it's got three themes. One theme is plan and develop, the second is partner and support, and the third is advocacy and policy. So we're seeking that you adopt this action plan and while I've got the floor, I'd like to just say we have our first meeting to try and form a housing committee or an action group, Housing Action Greater Swan Hill, being held here in the town hall tomorrow night. And hopefully the outcome of that is we get a local committee that will work with council and look to foster some private development in housing.
Thank you Ms Granger, any questions councillors on the, on the report? Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, thanks Ms, thanks Ms Granger. My question was regarding social implications, whether we wanted to, whether we could include social implications of something like preventing poverty and homelessness. So just whether we could have a bit more, expand a bit on, on the implications for the action plan. And the other question was regarding the budget for this action plan. I think there's reference to money coming from Economic Development Department, but, and then in the page 25, it does have a funding column, two columns. So those details in those columns, can you just explain them a little bit more?
Okay, so with regards to homelessness and poverty, we haven't dealt with that as a specific issue. That is something that's really being approached by the state government in their big build projects for social housing development. We're aware that we've got a social housing development occurring in Swan Hill and that is proposing 50 houses, which will be a great increase to our social housing stock. With regards to budget, we are looking at using some of the economic development initiatives. And then you will find, depending on our success, that you may actually get a request in the following year's budget for housing items in particular.
So that column Housing Support Fund, is that, what is that? Is that something we create or is that, is that a level of money that comes from another level of government?
Yeah, so the Housing Support Fund is largely looking at council funding or where we can access state level funding. At the moment, we have an open economic initiatives budget and we see that allocating money towards this project will help address the Housing Action Plan and also address our economic development strategy, which is also our consultation at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions councillors? If not, we'll ask for motion, councillor Young?
I'd like to move the motion as per the written, yeah, as per the recommendation.
As per recommendation, thank you, have a second for that motion, councillor Moore, thank you. Councillor Young, do you wish to speak to the motion, just microphone reminder, councillor Young.
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say this was a great initiative, there were so many people at the town hall that had input into this. It came from all different sorts of areas and they've come up with the three areas of plan and development, partner and support and advocacy. So all we really need to do now is to make it move ahead and get on with it because it's such a big issue in our area for our city and region and for our industry, that we need to get on to it as soon as we can.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I certainly do, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, this study is the culmination of many years of work by council and it sort of was instigated probably from 2016-17 onwards when we had the Romme Vale Housing Summit, where we tried, we were endeavoured to bring together the various partners up there to, at that time, which was the most immediate need for housing with the perceived level of population up there relative to official stats. And of course, we had to link that with the population study we did up there, which showed that the population was way higher than we initially identified, and that study ground truth what we already knew. And I think we can pretty much extrapolate that right across the municipality. And that's become very evident in Swan Hill as well as time's gone on and with the bigger developments happening here. With the proposed mine to our south, almond processing plant to our east and the other developments in the services to agriculture. We are a growing town and we need action for sure. This is coupled with the Small Towns Housing Study, which identified many structural impediments such as sewerage availability, potable water, which has held up many things there. It also will go hand in hand with our drainage, our drainage strategy, which we're currently doing. So I think this is a great, a great, a great action plan and a great way to move forward, move the town forward, move the region forward and to show that we, we actually are a region of growth and possibility and a great place to move to in the future with many, many opportunities here. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore, do I have any speakers against the motion? Do I have anybody else wants to speak in favour of the motion, councillor McKay?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the, to the council leaders and officers for bringing, really helping to progress these issues within our region. It's been a work of many various inputs and through the housing strategy. But what I guess I would like to say is that this is a plan for the whole of our municipality, but Swan Hill has a long standing of already kicking many goals in this area. The Towerhill development showed us as being really truly able to do our own development projects and it really has kick-started new housing in our region and has made it a better place to live with a wider variety of housing options. But what also must be said is it's a beautiful development with large areas of green space, places for lots of activity that families and people moving to the area really appreciate. So I think given that we've got goals on the board, we're in a good position to lobby for further funding and further engagement and to improve the housing stock across our region, which is so important. We do know that we've had really great expansion of horticulture and other industries in our region, but our towns haven't kept up the size of them and we need housing, thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Any other speakers, councillor Kelly?
I'll speak for the motion. I'm really pleased to see this action plan. It will cement what we do moving on from the, the housing summit that we held, which was, as councillor Young said, really successful. I think the name Housing Action Greater Swan Hill is wonderful and I'm very optimistic about tomorrow night's meeting of Housing Action Greater Swan Hill to form that group. I'm really pleased to see that this action plan is going to be flexible and responsive, because I think it needs to be. But it certainly can harness the innovation and creativity and that sense of collaboration that our community has shown over the years through our history. So it's a very exciting time. On the back of some very concerning, you know, things of young people not being able to get into housing, housing prices going so high, the market is very difficult at the moment and we do have a lot of pressures. And as, as the report says, it's a handbrake on, on economic, economic development and so many workplaces that are finding it difficult to get, get housing for their workers. But hopefully this can head off some of the problems that could come from the proposed mining boom. So places like Port Hedland that had such difficulties during the mining boom in WA, we do not want to go there. So this is us getting on the front foot and putting in place things that can, could allay any outcomes like that where people are, you know, priced out of the market in rentals and, and purchasing houses. So it's really positive, done the right way, it could have gains in, in economics, the environment, financial and social areas. And it's a nice simple plan, it needs a bit more detail in it that will come from when the, the group is set up. And I'm really pleased to see that it's here for us to pass today.
Thank you councillor Kelly. There's no further speakers, I will put the motion, oh, sorry councillor, no, didn't have your hand up before, sorry. I'll put the motion, those in favour of the motion, motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item 2.3, 2024 New South Wales Open State Golf Championship, Request for sponsorship from Murray Downs Golf and Country Club, Ms Granger.
Thank you Mayor, the council is being approached to be a major sponsor of this golf tournament held just over the border of Murray Downs. It's anticipated it will be held in November this year. A hundred and thirty golfers will be a weekly event and will have TV coverage for us two rounds. The golf club are seeking $25,000 sponsorship. In discussing this issue, we approached the golf club to get some more information about the number of people that's likely to the track, where accommodation would be other than at the golf club.
Thank you. And we've also approached Swan Hill Inc. to see whether or not they were looking at sponsorship and whether or not, if we jointly sponsored, what we could get for the region rather than both being individual sponsors. Having considered all of that information, we've put a recommendation to you that we be a sponsor at $10,000 amount, bearing in mind that we think Swan Hill Inc. will meet the other amount. And that also we are given a report after the event to let us know what the economic benefits were to Swan Hill.
Thank you Ms Granger, any questions councillors? Councillor McFee?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor. The $10,000 you suggested from, coming from the community grants fund. We are, in our budget, we said $80,000 initially, $79,000 surplus initially, and a report's come out later in the meeting, where we're going to be, end up with at this point in time, a 1.3 million surplus. There's nothing stopping council putting money back into that fund to, if we do choose, to sponsor this event.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion, please councillor McFee?
Yeah, I've actually got our secretary there, Minister Secretary of Motion. I'm hoping that council provide a $15,000 sponsorship commitment to the golf, as per what's written on the board there. And negotiate with Swan Hill Inc. to have their $10,000 sponsorship aligned to ours to make us a major sponsor, that's what it's all about. And obviously request a thing from Murray Downs. Everyone can see the whole motion up on the board.
Yeah, thank you, thank you councillor McFee, do I have a second for that, for that motion, councillor McKay? Councillor McFee, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor. Look, since my time on council, with all due respect to our Murrayville council over the border, Murray Downs is actually a suburb of Swan Hill, albeit we don't get rates from. They use our services, they use everything in our towns and people in their work and move in our municipality. This is a great opportunity for the sake of adding the $5,000 to the recommendation from the officers to make it a $15,000 contribution from us, align ourselves with Swan Hill Inc. to become a major sponsor. The benefit we get for the region is well worth spending that money. And as per the question I asked previously, there's nothing stopping council with a surplus, we're looking at having a surplus. We budgeted for a $79,000 round figure surplus, currently it's sitting at 1.3 million. We can replace that fund into the Community Events Fund for next year anyway. So no local businesses or no local organisations will miss out on that funding if we so choose. And the economic modelling shows a conservative figures, the, of a positive impact of up to a million dollars. So for, just for the extra $10,000 or $15,000, it's well worth spending for this type of event. It's going to showcase our region, aligned with everything that Swan Hill Inc. is aligned to do. And then coming on forward with this, it puts us as a major sponsor where we get rights on the thing. We get a ad to be able to put on there, all our sponsorships round the go around. And when it's situated, this competition is actually situated between two other major events in the golfing calendar. And this is the third major golf tournament in Australia. So it's a great opportunity for us to showcase our event and I thoroughly urge other councillors to spend that extra $5,000 and support this motion, thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McFee, councillor McKay?
I'm in support of councillor McFee's, the things that he's said and publicity doesn't come for free. So this competition will be telecast, there is a large population of golf-loving people across the country. They'll be able to see advertising that advertises our region, advertises the golf course and which in turn increases the amount of people using the accommodation tourism and restaurants in Swan Hill. So there is a benefit to our people in business and there's a benefit to our region, so I'm happy to support this motion.
Thank you councillor McKay. Do I have any speakers against the motion? Anybody else wishes to speak to the motion, councillor Moore?
Councillor McFee's expressed my sentiments pretty much exactly. And I'd also like to add that certainly as far as bank for buck goes, it seems like really good value if the modelling's correct. That's certainly better than the $2,000 a day we spend funding Pioneer Settlement. We certainly don't, after seven days, we don't get a million dollars back into our community from Pioneer Settlement. So this is really good, really good expenditure I think, outplayed for us. And if the promotion is carried out correctly, should put us on the map, Australia-wide if not worldwide, to be able to showcase our region and what we do here and what we do well, thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore, councillor Young?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I've been watching a few golf tournaments on TV lately and they are amazing. The amount of people that they get there, a lot of people coming from overseas especially to watch them. So I think it's a great event for Swan Hill to be able to get that coverage, which will be worldwide. And it's got to be a great benefit to the Swan Hill region.
Thank you councillor Young, and councillor Kelly?
Yeah, look, I did have a reticence about, about this because Murray Downs does have poker machine revenue. But I can see the point that councillor McFee's making and it would be good to be a major sponsor because of the promotion. Swan Hill has always been a great place for big sporting tournaments and events and this, this will be another one. It does highlight also the need that we have for more short-term accommodation and, and in the motel sector. So if we're going to attract big events like this, we, we need to have places for people to stay and of a standard that is, that is necessary. But yeah, I, I think this will be another excellent event on our calendar and I wish it all the best.
Thank you, no speakers against, I will now put the motion, those in favour, the motion is carried, thank you. Item 2.4, the KSI Third Quarter Council Plan Progress Report, Mr Patat?
Thank you Mr Mayor. This KSI Third Quarter Report is measured according to our council plan 2021 to 2025. The period reported is from 1st January 2024 to 31st of March 2024. During this quarter, Mr Mayor and the councillors, we progressed nine objectives, made progress to, made a progress on the following, finalised the implement and implement, implement rural living, rural residency strategy, Mr Mayor. And we also progressed nine objectives to completion. We progressed two objectives from, not started, two in progress during the third quarter. Six objectives marked from progress complete to complete and ongoing in the third quarter. And four objectives were marked from progress four objectives, uh, were marked from progress to complete in the third quarter. And, uh, with the recommendation, uh, Mr. Mayor, that the council adopt the Third Quarter Council, uh, Plan Progress Report, twenty three, twenty four. The detailed report is attached from page thirty nine onwards. I'll take that as read, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with the recommendation, uh, that the council adopt the Third Quarter Council, uh, Plan Progress Report, twenty three, uh, twenty four. As presented, happy to pay questions, Mr. Mayor, if there's any.
Thank you, Mr. Patat, and, uh, yes, I'll also take the, the report as read and we have discussed at an assembly. However, if there are any pressing questions, councillors, um, let me know. If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion, please councillors. Councillor Young?
Yes, I'll move it.
Move as per recommendation?
As per recommendation.
Thank, thank you.
Recommendation?
Seconda, councillor McKay. Thank you, just, yep, your microphone, thanks councillor Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd just like to say, um, we've made great, um, um, movement in a lot of these areas. And it's been before, an assembly before, and, um, it's just moving through the stages of it and showing that we are, um, doing an excellent job in solving a lot of the issues. Um, so I will just say, um, I'll just support the moving of the motion, um, until we go on to the next quarter.
Great, thank you councillor Young. Councillor McKay, you wish to speak?
Uh, thank you, it's lovely to have these reports, you do give us, it gives us a way to map and the public also to map where we're, as we're moving through our council plan and how we're aligning. Uh, that is good for us, it's also good for the public, it makes us accountable. Um, I'd just like to acknowledge the great work we've done in the youth space, uh, both here with Youth Inc. and in Robben Vale. And recognise that this, uh, council plan is met, this update is mentioning the good work that we've done. And we're going to face ongoing challenges with the withdrawal of some of the state funding, so that's sad. However, uh, our continue, our commitment will continue in some way. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to section three of the agenda. Officer reports for noting. Item three point one, quarterly major projects program update, uh, for the quarter ending thirty one March twenty twenty four. Mr. Patat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the quarterly, uh, major project program update, uh, period ending March twenty twenty four. Uh, in this quarter, we completed, uh, two out of eleven active, uh, projects, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, completed project, uh, the Bobby Way legislation expansion and the March Drive, uh, planning platform. Uh, the, uh, effect of this report is, is read, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is that, that the council notes the progress made on the projects. The detailed reports are attached, uh, from, uh, page seventy one almost, Mr. Mayor, on the, uh, last version.
Thank you, Mr. Patat, and I can concur that, uh, both of those, the completion of both of those projects have, has definitely had a huge impact, both in Robben Vale and in, and in Swan Hill. So, uh, so well done to the team. Any questions, councillors? Councillor Kelly?
Thanks, Mr. Patat. Um, I had a question, um, on page sixty eight, it says funding application in with SRV, is that? I'm just expecting that that's going to be Sport Rec- Victoria or something, isn't it?
Sports and Recreation, Victoria.
And the other one was, um, planning the Swan Hill Outdoor Swimming Pool. Um, that is project exception, meaning it hasn't, nothing's been done on that, is that what that means?
Yes.
Yep, and then in the, the fold out page, um, had a question there. It says that the Butterworth Street drainage is on hold. Um, work started, then works on hold due to issues with traffic management.
That's correct, uh, councillor Kelly, the project, uh, was on hold in, uh, in the reporting period, but it's now commenced. There was, uh, I believe there were some changes in the legislation in terms of traffic management, which, uh, the contractor did not address during, uh, the tender submission, which was under the old legislation. So when the legislation changed, when we commenced the project, uh, we started the project on the new, uh, legislation. Therefore, they were not complying with, uh, the traffic management requirements. Then they had to rectify that before they could, uh, recommence the project.
Is that just like safety when you close roads and things, is that what that's about?
The traffic safety.
Yep. Okay, and with the page seventy two, it says, um, the Swan Hill Regional Community Sporting Hub. Um, I wasn't sure why it said zero percent when there has been work on that, I thought. So why does it say zero percent for the Swan Hill Regional Community Sporting Hub design?
It is designed and commenced, uh, at the end of the quarter. So we, or if it had commenced, the invoice, uh, for payment wasn't received. So we did not make any payment, uh, in the, uh, third quarter, ending, uh, thirty first of March. So up to that point, we did not spend any funds towards the project.
Yep, um, but there has been work on it, so is this, is the zero percent accurate?
Yes, because we did not commence any work, uh, in the, uh, in the quarter. The, uh, the work was.
Yeah, so we've been working on the showgrounds master plan, uh, which is, uh, reported earlier. And this project hasn't commenced because we're waiting for the finalisation of that master plan.
The master plan is not part of this, uh,
It's a separate project.
Yep, but this is this, the footy club rooms building, this one is, isn't it?
That's correct, and that's all the line, um, in the master planning process.
Yep. I'd, I thought we'd already got a plan for that, that, like a draft plan for that though, so.
Again, is the question noted councillor Kelly in, uh, or in the daily, in factual information?
Um, yep.
Any other questions?
No, that's all.
Any other questions, councillors? Uh, if not, I'll call for a motion, please. Councillor Young, move as per recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, second for the, for the motion? Oh, councillor McKay, thank you. Councillor Young?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, just think we're moving ahead at a really good rate. And when you look at the next one, two about our financial position, financial performance, I think a lot of these projects have been done, um, within budget and, and most of them on time, with some of them still moving ahead. But, um, it's great to see this activity within the region and what's happening with the housing along with these programs that are being finished off. Um, I just think it's, um, very notable what's happening in the Swan Hill region.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor McKay?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add, thank you. Uh, anyone wish to speak against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried, thank you. Item three point two, quarterly review of finance, of financial performance and financial position to the thirty first of March twenty twenty four. Uh, Mr. Hat, again, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, this is the, uh, financial performance and, uh, financial position to the, uh, period ending thirty first of March twenty twenty four. I summarised the statement of income and expenditure and a summarised, uh, balance sheet for, uh, nine months ended thirty first March twenty twenty four. I include in this report major variance to budget as at thirty first of March twenty twenty four. Also explained by the way of notes on the, uh, test reports. The forecast result is expected to be better than, uh, budget at this stage of the financial year. The particular surplus assumes, uh, that the major projects and capital works for the remainder of the financial year will be within the budget. The, uh, detailed, uh, favorable and unfavorable variances are recorded down on page seventy four and seventy five, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is that, uh, the council receive, uh, council note, there's a typo there, council note that the anticipated end of the financial year results is one million three hundred sixty one thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars, better than the allocated budget surplus of seventy nine thousand and thirty dollars at this stage. The detailed, uh, report are kept on, uh, page seventy seven, the, uh, statement of income and expenditure. And, uh, balance sheet is attached on seventy nine, page seventy nine. It's worth noting that, uh, the council has got fifty five million seven hundred ninety eight thousand dollars sitting in the bank. It's a very positive, uh, bank balance. And, uh, at this stage, uh, looking at our financial figures, we are a sustainable, uh, council. Happy to pay questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Patat. Any questions, councillors? There's no, no question, uh, question, councillor Kelly?
Yeah, I thought it might be worthwhile asking about, um, the additional costs associated with the Fairfax Festival. Um,
Can you make a reference, please councillor Kelly?
Yep, page, page seventy four, the third la- uh, the fourth last box. Um, sixty three thousand dollars unfavorable. So, um, I think probably Bruce would be the one.
I'll refer that to Mr. Morse, thanks Bruce.
Yeah, um, through you, Mayor, councillor Kelly, um, yeah, due to the Fairfax being split over two years and also we had a couple of, um, key sponsorships that, that weren't, that were budgeted for that weren't attractive. Um, and that's been one of the triggers for us to, uh, to bring forward the setting up Fairfax as a separate entity rather than counselling the underwriter for it. So as, as a result of that, um, financial result and some other things that went on, that's why we want to make sure that Fairfax stays sustainable, so.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion, please?
Oh, I have one question, sorry.
Sorry, question?
Um, what is, Mr. Patat, what is the process for us, um, with, with the surplus? And does it go on and we decide how to, how that's to be spent?
I apologize, I didn't put on my speaker. Um, Mr. Patat, with the budget surplus being higher than was anticipated for the benefit of the public, the council does go through a decision making about spending of that allocated? That may be a question for acting CEO?
Uh, thank, thank you councillor Kelly, I will respond to that. At this stage, uh, the surplus is just an indicative figure.
Yes.
Uh, so savings, uh, we, uh, we wait for the end of the financial year when we prepare our financial statements, uh, and gets audited. Once it's audited, uh, the surplus will come, if there's any surplus, we'll come, uh, back to the council. Council will then decide on how to allocate, uh, the surplus to the projects or to operational or to whatever, whatever projects they want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Moore? As per recommendation, thank you councillor Moore. Sorry?
The typo.
Okay, yeah, got it. Um, got that, yeah. Uh, seconda, councillor Young? Thank you, councillor Moore.
Uh, yeah, well, it's, uh, higher interest rates have, um, been detrimental to a lot of people. But first, on the rural city council, as we can see, the majority of this is due to higher interest rates and higher interest income for us, uh, which is very fortunate. I do also note that, um, livestock exchange user fees are down considerably, uh, due to, uh, according to this, lower, um, livestock numbers, but that's only part of the, um, uh, answer there. Uh, of course, prices are way down and, uh, and I can't help but, uh, reflect on the, you know, with the cost of living the way it is. Uh, beef at the, uh, livestock exchange making three dollars live, uh, which translates to about six dollars dressed. Uh, and if you want to buy your, buy a reasonable steak down at any one of the supermarkets, you're paying at least twenty five dollars a kilo. Um, so there's a big gap there and, um, we wonder why, when we can see it sold down here for six dollars. Um, we can take the losses here if we saw it reflected in our supermarkets, but it's not. Uh, other than that, um, we, we have, we've always had our ups and downs. And, uh, at this point in time, we're having a lot more ups than, um, than we are downs. And, uh, that's, that's a great, uh, position to be in. Um, hopefully we'll, uh, with our, um, employee costs being favorable, um, we, we actually wish that that wasn't as much. Um, we were actually filling all our positions and we certainly hope we can move to those, that point of, uh, filling all our positions, which are particularly in planning, which is a key driver of our, of our development, our economic prosperity, uh, as we go forward. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Councillor Young?
I just, um, wanted to say congratulations to our staff in the financial area because they've done a really good job. I mean, we had David Leighton and Warren Snyder in there before, who was the top of the tree. And they had to take that over and I think they've done an excellent job.
Thank you councillor Young. Any speakers against the motion? If notion, if, if not, uh, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item three point three, uh, Audit and Risk Committee meeting minutes from the fourth of April twenty twenty four. Mr. Patat?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, the audit committee meeting was held on fourth of April twenty twenty four. And the following, uh, items were discussed. Uh, number one, department representation. Two, internal audit updates, service payroll, council papers and asset management. Uh, number three, strategic internal audit program status update and industry update, recent reports and publication of, uh, impact. Draft forty four, uh, strategy memorandum, risk, review of risk register, quarterly risk report. Uh, review, uh, risk management framework, quarterly review of financial performance and, uh, condition to, uh, thirty first of December twenty twenty three, financial year twenty twenty five budget update, council expenses, uh, drove out to December twenty twenty three, great script, quarterly upgrade. Uh, number twelve, Swan Hill Art Gallery and the State, the Station Centre and Swan Hill Tourism and Cultural Hub update. The thirteen, the last, uh, was audit and risk, final report and update of appendix A and B of the audit and risk chart. Uh, I will present the minutes of the, uh, meeting in the confidential business, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the recommendation is that council note the contents of this, happy to pay questions.
Thank you, Mr. Patat. Um, I would expect there wouldn't be too many questions because it's a audit and risk committee. So you'll move as per recommendation, thank you councillor Kelly. Seconda, councillor McKay, thank you. Uh, do you wish to speak, councillor Kelly?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay.
No, thank you.
Okay, okay, I'll put the motion, uh, all those in favour. Motion is carried, thank you. Moving on to section four, uh, sign and seal. Over to you, Ms. Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, this report is really just a procedural report, uh, just to, um, it really is expected that all councillors have, uh, read that report. And the recommendation is as it stands, the council notes the actions of signing and sealing the documents under delegation as scheduled.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? If not, can I have a motion?
Uh, I have a question.
Question?
I'm just wondering, when we see these sign and seal, um, lists, um, is it appropriate to ask what they're about or would that be better done prior to the meeting rather than in the meeting because of confidentiality? Um, or is it appropriate to? Because I mean, we get them, but we don't, we don't actually know what the one, seven, three is about, whether it's about a crossover or a tree or what it's about.
Uh, through you, Mayor, yes, that's right, there's a lot of confidential information in that in terms of names, potentially, um, costs and things like that. So that's not appropriate for public.
So if I want to know, I'll ask outside the meeting, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, move councillor Kelly? Seconda, councillor McKay? Wish to speak, councillor Kelly?
No.
No, councillor McKay?
No.
No, thank you, put the motion, those in favour. Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, four point two, councillor assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items. Uh, again, Ms. Johnson, over to you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, this is just a record of attendance and agenda items from, uh, our councillors. Again, I believe it's just as noted, um, that the council note the contents of, um, all the assemblies and attendance by our councillors.
Thank you. Questions, comments, councillors? If not, can I have a mover?
I have a question.
Um, if I could ask, I If I could ask, I think I noted somewhere that an agenda, an assembly is a meeting of four or more councillors, and I did note that on the sixteenth of April, there were only three, so does that mean, does that have any significance in regard to the, what happens at the meeting, or is it, doesn't really matter? It's not compulsory. Suppose it's a question for the acting CEO.
I might have to take that question on notice, councillor, sorry, which, which meeting were you referring to, sorry?
Sixteenth of April.
Sixteenth of April. And which, which part of the governance rules are you referring to with the?
Um.
The coram?
It says it here.
Says it in the discussion for the item. An assembly of councillors is defined as a meeting that is planned or scheduled at which, at which at least half of the council and one officer are in attendance. I suppose three could be considered half.
Through you, Mayor, look, I'd have to take that on notice, councillor Kelly, other than to say clearly at assemblies, they are just discussions held and no decisions are actually made at those meetings, so therefore the meetings generally do proceed and sharing of information.
Yeah, look, I'm looking at my paper, and I think there was a change to that where councillor Jeffries was.
Said there was a duplication?
Yeah, so was he in or out of that one?
So, so your electronic copy is correct?
Yeah, I'm not looking at that, though.
Okay, so what date are you looking at?
The sixteenth.
So he was there, councillor Jeffrey was there?
Yeah.
Just his name was recorded twice?
Yeah.
So that's been amended?
Yeah, but, but, yeah, I just.
Minor, minor error.
Just, just wondering about whether.
Take that on notice, but.
Yeah.
But as Ms Johnson has said.
Where the three is half.
They are a briefing, they are a briefing session, so we'll have to refer to the.
Half of seven is three and a half.
Rules around attendance on that, noting that the information that is shared at assemblies is made available to all councillors prior to and any outcomes after the, after the assembly as well. I think in, in all cases where there's action items, they get addressed as per, as per discussions at assembly, and information gets distributed afterwards. There's no information that is only privy to people who are at the assembly, all the information is available to all councillors.
Oh, I just, it's just that I missed one, and it was about drainage, but then there was nothing that I could, I couldn't make it up because there was no notes or.
So, so as, as has already been outlined councillor Kelly, the information that was shared at that assembly was a visual presentation that had no hard copy component, which is why that couldn't be shared. The recommendation, councillors, is that council notes the contents of the, of the report. Do I have a mover for that motion? Thank you, move councillor McKay. Seconda, councillor Kelly, do you wish to speak to that? Councillor McKay? Councillor Kelly, do you wish to speak to that? No? All those in favour of the motion? Thank you, motion is carried. We will move on to section five. Notices of motion. Notice, motion five point one, addressing climate change across council, I'll get, councillor Kelly, I'll ask you to read your motion, wait for a second before we commence debate, please. Councillor Kelly?
Having given due notice, I move that a report. Having given due notice, I move that a report come to council at the July Audrey meeting on an audit of current adequacy of council's plans, policies and strategies to address climate change, particularly compliance with the Local Government Act, Climate Change Act and other relevant legislation.
Do I have a second for that motion? Seconda councillor McKay. Prior to debate, I'm happy to take questions of councillor Kelly, given it's her motion, or of the relevant director that would, that would potentially deal with the outcome of this motion. Are there any questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Councillor Kelly, you report in relation to climate change, why aren't you asking for a report on the local government areas yet?
Sorry, I missed that.
The, the motion is about compliance with the Local Government Act as far as climate change goes. Why aren't we having an audit on all areas of council that we do in relation to the Local Government Act that we're supposed to comply with?
I'll take, take that as a question, although it's quite a large question.
The question is, why are you having, why asking for a audit on only climate change when we have a lot of responsibilities in, under the Local Government Act to comply with a lot of other areas of council?
Councillor Kelly, give you the opportunity to respond?
Sure. Having, I, I have particular concern about our compliance with climate change from, from my experience attending seminars and workshops and, and the reading that I've done, and so it's piqued my concern several times. I haven't had the same concern with other aspects of the Local Government Act, but, but this one has been ongoing, and so I felt that this was important for us to, to do. So I haven't, I haven't felt, I mean, I don't know if others have felt it, but I haven't felt a concern with other aspects.
Okay, further question?
And just a follow up question, well, which part of the Local Government Act have your concerns about in compliance with climate change?
In regards to the sections about looking after the wellbeing of the community, considering risk, and. Those, those were the main, the main ones.
Councillor Young, you had a question?
My question was around, you've asked for a report to come to the July meeting, but asking for an audit of current adequacies of the council plans, policies and strategies to address climate change to me is a huge job, and I would like to think we've only just got a new environmental officer, that I can see that maybe that this is not the right time to ask for that to be done at this point in time.
Yeah, I did consider that, and I, I believe that we do have the ability to do it because of the gap that exists between when our environment officer left in December, and the appointment of the new one in late April means that there were funds that would have been allocated to that officer that now sit unused, and that could possibly be allocated to do this work, whether we do it in house or get a consultant to do it. So that there is funds to do it, that I, I feel it's worthwhile, and that would be good use of those funds. We've just considered the, the financial.
That's all, we'll just keep it to the.
Report before, yeah.
Keep, kept to that.
But in.
Sorry, just continuing to answer the question.
Oh, in regards to the Local Government Act, I distributed a flyer that, that has been put out, that talks about local governments' roles and responsibilities, and it talked about the roles and responsibilities in regards to the Local Government Act twenty twenty, and it talks about the strength and the mandate for councils to act on climate change, the role of councillors to provide good governance for the benefit and wellbeing of the community. Councils are required to promote the economic, social and environmental sustainability of the municipal district, including mitigation and planning for climate risks.
I think, I think we're getting into points of what will be covered in, in debate, councillor Kelly, but you've made your point in, in regards to answering questions of councillor McPhee and councillor Young. I have a follow up question, councillor Young, from councillor Young's question to Ms Granger, because I'm assuming this would come under your directorate, Ms Granger. What level of resourcing, if this, if this motion was to be passed, what level of resourcing both, or both or either timewise and monetary value would be, would be required to undertake the, the outcomes of this motion?
Thank you, Mayor. We would need to look at resourcing this from outside our current staffing resources, probably seek a budget variation, and we would need to scope how wide the audit would need to be, but it's not something we could do within our existing team.
Good, thank you. If there's no other questions, councillor Kelly, I'll give you the floor to, to speak to your motion.
Thank you. Well, look, I'll take as read some of the information I've got there in my preamble, and I'll just try to add to that. So in that one page flyer I sent around to councillors, it does talk about the principles in the Local Government Act, councils are required to give priority to achieving the best outcome for municipal community, including future generations, and that regional, state and national plans and policies are to be taken into account during council strategic planning, and council must ensure its decisions, actions and information are transparent. And there's now a clear expectation that decision making is supported by robust and transparent practices, and that the long term adverse consequences of climate change for future generations are incorporated into council planning, decisions and actions. It also notes the municipal public health and wellbeing plans, to which we include in our, in our council plan, at the start of the council plan, it includes items from that municipal public health and wellbeing plan, and it specifically talks about climate change. And then we have the Victorian Climate Change Act of two thousand and seventeen, which talks about guiding principles, informed decision making, integrated decision making, risk management, compatibility, responses should be, responses should build on the experiences of regions, sectors, communities and industry, complement existing and planned work and contribute to and be compatible with efforts to reduce emissions as well as adapt to climate change. Talks about equity and community engagement, and of course, the Victorian planning system. So I, I. I wrote some notes here. I was lucky enough to attend the climate summit in Melbourne in September. Council paid for me, paid a hu, thirteen, thirteen hundred dollars for me to attend that three day seminar, it was put on by Cities Powers Partnership. So I'm bringing information from there, and I think with our council plan, of course, we, we set it up, but it does have to be flexible and responsive, and so my motion is, is to try to, I suppose tweak it at this, at this, at this stage, and as I say in my preamble, to assist us to be compliant, but also to assist future planning that we do, and, and for the next council to, to have this report, to be able to base their council plan on. So it allows for the tweaking of our council plan. There are other examples of where we've done this, this wouldn't be the first one, and there's many things that we have done already that, that weren't explicitly in our council plan. So I think this will just help to make our council plan better, because we do mention climate change in it, but we don't have a lot of explicit actions coming from, from that mention of it. So this would make sure that we, we're comprehensive. So the, the seminar was attended by councils and local governments from all around Australia. I got to Melbourne by tra, by train, and then I trammed around, and I stayed at my son's house in Pasco Vale. So I was trying to be consistent with, with, with trying to use as little energy as possible to get to this seminar.
Thirty seconds, councillor Kelly?
And basically at that, I began to realise that we possibly have to do more. I want to have the evidence for that, and I want to be, be able to share that with everybody. So we need to be able to apply for funding to do the work we need to do, and if we have this audit, then we can know what we need to do to get in, to put in place. So we need to take a broad view. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKay?
Thank you. I think that we could get some benefits out of doing an audit of our work towards any day in climate change. We have already done significant work in having solar power put onto many of our buildings, but as an individual and organisation, I think it would be very useful to measure the benefit that we're getting out of that, of the financial benefit, and have, have that available so we can see where, how much savings we are making and what savings we could make in the future. So that's just one example, but also with an idea of what savings and benefit to the climate we can also have maybe out of moving to electric vehicles. They're just two examples where I think we could possibly get some benefit. We do have plentiful sun, and we're getting some benefit out of that, but there's probably more gains to be gotten, thank you. So, but, sorry, additionally, I would like to say we are losing an amount of tree cover on our roadsides by incremental die off or removal of trees, and this has an implication for climate change in the long run, but also a negative effect on biodiversity, and that's another area where I'm very concerned that we are more vigilant in that space. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McKay. Any speakers against the motion? Councillor Young?
Yes, I'd just like to speak against the motion. Having come from a farming background, I'm very aware that often the people that attend these conferences are not really very supportive of the farming community, and a lot of the information that's given doesn't take into consideration the positives of what's been going on out there in the farming community. They are generally very responsive and concerned about the issues, and that's why we do have much, much less chemical usage, not the same farming practices as what we used to have. And I'm just concerned that quite often the negatives are brought up all the time. I'm also concerned about things like the water buybacks, which have now affected our community considerably, when you look around what's happened in Tresco with the number of farms that have closed down now, and it's similar to what's happening in Wurundjeri, and that's come about because of a lot of concerns, unwarranted concerns at times about climate change. And I think we need to be very conscious of that because our economic background all comes from, not all comes from, but it's our major economic contributor to our region, and I think I would be really concerned if this was put through now, because there are so many things out there already. All the farmers have their produce tested every year for chemical residues, and they have to record their activities in both broadacre and horticulture, and I think we should be thinking about that a lot, and what sort of ramifications there will be if a lot of the things that are talked about in climate change are actually implemented.
Thank you councillor Young. Do you have any speakers in favour of the motion? Any other speakers against? Councillor Moore?
Thank you councillor King. Once again, this motion sort of assumes that we've sort of done nothing, or what we have done has been inadequate, and I'll take a bit of an offence to that. When the plan was, when the council plan was written, it was written, and when it was mandatory that we be compliant with the, with the Climate Change Act and the Local Government Act, it was mandatory, and this question was asked when we wrote, when the plan was being signed off on. It was, was compliant with that act, the honourable other associated DAX, EPA, Waste Recourse Recovery, et cetera. Uh, it was, it was compliant with that, that act, the Honourable Associate Dax, EPA, Waste Recourse Recovery, et cetera. Um, as far as an audit goes, um, there's a million things I would respond to, um, an audit goes, we've just had a report and I will quote on page fifty of our, uh, council plan report. Careful and responsible management of our environment for a sustainable future. One point two point one one. Support initiatives align with policy such as the circular economy and provide tangible outcomes for the community, for example, cleaner air, litter roadside dumping, cleaning waste. Commentary: Grant Fund Regional Vic, Household Education Behaviour Change Fund Round Two was successful, sixty thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Main focus and goal of projects to educate and help residents quickly adapt to and correctly use new household recycling waste resources. Uh, Stage Two Compass Facility Infrastructure, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred grand received for that. Transfrost Station Upgrade Round Two, two hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Grand application currently being prepared for purchase of a high combust- high compression mobile plastic baler from, through council's funding programme following great success with the Ag Plastics Recovery Trial, which council was one of only two councils, I think, to participate in because we have one of the greatest per capita airports of Ag Plastics. Um, grant, uh, grant funding there. Uh, we go down to one point two, one point two. Pre- uh, prepare an advocacy document for renewable energy resources in the municipality. Work continues on this. One point two point one point three, develop drainage drains for key urban areas in the municipality. Consultants finalised based drainage, based drainage model. And we all know that that drainage plan will be taking into account any amount of climate change and it'll be designed to a cost, whether it's a one in twenty, one in fifty or one in a hundred event. The higher the, the one in a, the higher the event number we go, the more expensive it's going to be because it'll mean bigger pipes. Uh, implement effective diversion and reuse of waste resources. Shed ma- mattress recycling facility at.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finally, uh, the list goes on there. Read it for yourself, page fifty. Charge in the regions round three is just being released. We will be in there for, uh, for sure. Planning Scheme amendments, uh, sustainable developments, that is in the hands of the state governments. And I don't think it's been passed, but Casby, uh, through C V J and Casby, we have been pushing for that, uh, the whole time. So, you know, I don't know what more a council can do. Um, if, if, if the council is not aware of all these things that we have done and have been doing, and I don't know how many resources we've got, but we, we, we're, we're, we're under-resourced, but we are doing a hell of a lot and we continue to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor McPhee, you're supposed to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, look, firstly, look, I, look, I admire councillor Kelly's, um, interest in climate change and I respect that entirely. It's something we all must take in, into consideration in all aspects of life. However, in relation to this report, I can't support this motion on this occasion. There are other motions I will consider in that will be brought up shortly, um, which may be a better way of doing things. But we have a independent audit committee that looks at audits right throughout our council practices and processes. If there's any great concern where we're not complying, that's the, the forum it should be taken up in, not this forum. That's what they're there for, to ensure that we are ordered by an independent body. That is what the audit committee is about. Um, and as councillor Moore said, when, when we've done our council plan and when we were submitted, we had to comply with certain requirements in relation to, um, climate change, which we have met. Um, it is an area that, um, people consider it a bit of a, um, elephant in the room when they talk climate change. But I'd like to just reiterate, I'd like to, um, commend councillor Kelly on her action in relation to climate change and her continued passion towards it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Uh, councillor Kelly, you have the right of reply.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, with, with the audit and risk, I, I, I feel that if we do this audit that I'm proposing, um, that we, we won't have to be, uh, have the audit and risk highlight that we have some gaps. Because we will have been proactive and found the gaps ourselves and then addressed them. Um, as for, you know, my intention is not to offend, not to highlight that anyone, um, has done anything wrong. It's just highlighting that I feel we do need to check in and make sure that we are compliant because, um, of all the things that have, have and could be done, um, I do not feel that we, uh, we are there yet. And I feel it's timely that, that we do get there. So the role of local councils, um, is the things that councillor Moore and councillor Mackay have brought up, we, we, yes, we are doing some things. But I suppose I have, um, an aspiration that we have a really high standard of quality that we are, that we lead, that we, um, that we are really, uh, comprehensive, that we, we clear, that we're transparent and that we, we are complying with the, the, um, the sp- both the spirit of those acts and also doing the actions.
Thirty seconds.
Because I do think it will, um, have a ripple effect across our community in so many aspects, um, to make it a better place to live. Did you wind me up there? Yeah?
Yeah, I said thirty seconds, yeah.
Yeah, um, so we need, we need, um, you know, to, to look across and see what else other, other councils are doing, how they are, um, interpreting that compliance. And, 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 um, and check. I mean, the audit might say, no, all good. But it might say, oh, here's some strategic things that you could add to your, um, plans and strategies and policies that will make you even more compliant, that will, that will give you all these opportunities, opportunities to seek that funding that's there.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Um, everybody has spoken. Uh, I will put the motion, those in favour of the motion, those against, the motion is lost. Notice motion five point two, uh, improving strategic planning for environment, climate and sustainability. Um, councillor Kelly, uh, same process.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you want me to read it?
So if, yes, if you can read your motion, please. Thank you.
Yep. I'd like to move that, uh, officers investigate the establishment of a council environment sustainability climate committee. The investigation should review similar committees in other rural councils, um, consider terms of reference and expected benefits, outline resourcing requirements and report to an assembly in the third quarter of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Mackay? Thank you. Uh, any questions, councillors on the, on the motion? Yes, councillor Mackay?
Thank you. I would like to ask the acting CEO of Ms. Johnson, um, and also following up with, um, manager of planning, the mid-manager of planning, Ms. Granger. Um, as to, you've worked in other councils recently, have they had environmental help consultative committees?
I'll defer to the director.
Um, there are a number of environment committees that exist. Um, when it's a committee, though, it is usually involving some, uh, members of the public, of the community, in addition to just officers and councillors.
Any other questions? Um, I, I have a question a- again for Ms. Granger because obviously this has come under your directorate. Um, there was a report in November last year when we, when we reviewed, uh, all of the committees, uh, that council is represented on. And the recommendation, uh, in that report was that, uh, an environment committee should not be established. Uh, has the, has the position, has officers' position or recommendation changed on that?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. Councillor Kelly, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, uh, I brought this, um, from the December meeting. I put this motion up then, but I wasn't there to, um, move it, so it, it lapsed. And so I bring it up again. Um, as someone who, um, you know, attempts to, uh, volunteer and, and, um, work for the environment in, in the capacities that I am able to, um, I just see that a, a committee like this would assist force one hill. Um, because of a lot of factors and I'll try and, um, outline what they are. So we're a rural council, we've got a large geographic area, we're covered by two CMAs. Um, we've got other state government bodies, we've got neighbouring councils, we're on a river. Really, you know, huge issue to be on the Murray River in regards to the Murray Island Basin Plan, et cetera. Um, you know, we've got so many things to comply with. I've listed there some of the, some of the issues, the upcoming work that we're expected to do in this, um, area. Whether it's, um, you know, updating our sustainability strategy, um, dealing with other authorities, scoping and applying for funding and grants from, um, federal and state governments, advising and advoc- advocating on needs and opportunities, um, supporting caring for country by traditional owners. Um, and, and things like involving, uh, developing submissions and, and for renewable energy and, and uh, mining projects. So, you know, there's a huge amount of work in this area. There's a huge amount of cooperation, collaboration, um, and working together. And, you know, we need those economies of scale. We need, we don't have heaps of money and we have some really big challenges. So we need to be really clever about it. And I think having an, a committee like this, which can, um, assist our officers to bring in that information through linking up with, whether it's, um, you know, a community member from Slim or someone from the CMA or someone from Aus Fish, um, so that we can work together. We also have the problem of the movement of staff. So we have an environment officer and then after a year or two, they move on. And that, that loss of corporate knowledge and I think a committee could, could satisfy the, the, the holding on of projects when, when an officer, um, moves on, that, that, that those projects and that information isn't lost because of that, of that committee structure. So it would help us to keep up, it would help us to support our environment officer. It would help us to, uh, attract funding. Um, it would make us a more attractive employer, um, to, to those staff who, who we do employ to look after the environment area, whether it's sustainability or climate. Um, it would help us to comply with the act. Um, I just think he- all heads around the table, sitting around the table. Um, we have people who want to be involved, whether it's the field naturalists or our traditional owners. Um, and, and having a committee would, would bring that in there. So I think it would, would be economically, um, beneficial for us. Um, it would enable, a bit like we're setting up a, a, a housing committee. Uh, committee structures, humans work well when they work together as teams. And I think, um, a structure like this, you know, look at all this renewable energy stuff, look at the Mally CMA catchment plan. We've got this document here, Ready, React, Recover, preparing for emergencies in the lot in Mally and a lot of them are environmental things, heat, extreme heat, flooding, um, our path to net zero from Colibyn Water. Like, there's so much to do and I just think a committee, of course, it has to be efficient, effective, um, not too budgetary heavy. Um, but if we're smart about it, I think a committee i- is a, is a thing that could really help. Once again, at this conference I went to, I sat on a table at the dinner where we're giving, they were giving out prizes to councils who have done great stuff in this area. Um, I sat next to an officer who was from, uh, a regional council and, and he, and I was asking him, Manuel, how does it work at your council? And he said, we have this committee.
Thirty seconds.
So I didn't just make it up. We're just gonna do something that other councils do that work for them. Um, and help your council to, to really make strides in this area, which, um, of co- you know, I think, I think we need to and I, you know, one of the beauties of living here is the land, is the, 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 the sun, the earth, the, the, the bush, the air. Um, yeah, it's the basis of our livability, so.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Mackay?
Thank you. Um, it's about twenty-five years ago Swan Hill Royal City Council had a Greening Consortium that they supported. Brought all the, um, groups who are interested in the environment together and, uh, they consulted with council. The meetings were facilitated and helped bring the field naturalists, land care, any, um, environment-interested groups into the same room. They could help, uh, form submissions. They did, uh, grant and project applications and it was a really. I apologize.
Take her.
I apologize. Twenty years ago, Swan Hill Royal City supported the Greening Consortium that brought land care, a variety of environmental groups, um, the field naturalists, all of those different people who are interested in the environment in our region together. And we were, and the group worked with council and supported many great projects. And I think with great fondness of many of the now past farmers who participated in that group and some who are still around. Um, those days were different in a lot of ways. And one of the ways that there is now the, um, the environment departments within our region have been largely, largely, um, eaten away. They are no longer the presence they were in the public service, that is in Department of DCA or, um, even the field officers that used to work for the Department of Ag that were in every small town. We have got, uh, the public service in that area has really been eroded over time and it's really bad, actually. Um, as far as weed management, um, I can name many, many issues that are just flying right under the radar in our ra- region. The South African daisies that are spreading across every roadside, which are probably the greatest threat to biodiversity in our region that no one's mentioning. Um, I'm not suggesting that we can take these things on, but we could advocate for them. Uh, this is about really quality of life in our region and at the moment, there's no, um, organisational group to turn to who's got those eyes on, on that thing. We had a fish kill with thousands of fish die in a lake very close to us here. Mo- thousands of fish to, died between here and Robinvale because of water quality issues that I think can be probably quite easily solved if our region had a better voice around the table. So I do support this. Um, at the moment, the voice for the environment is very, very quiet. And another thing that I would really like to say is that, um, any, um, ambitions in this area are not at all being negative about, um, farmers or agriculture. I think all of us in this room, mo- many of the councils in this room, in fact, most of us have very, very close family members who are very, very successful farmers who are also very concerned about the environment. There's no aspersions on farming meant by any of this. And in fact, this is about quality of life, water quality, quality of air. Um, you know, the quality of our region and it does go down to attracting people to live here. We're far from anywhere else. And one of the beautiful things about it is the peace and quality of the natural environment. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mackay. I did give you a little bit of extra time.
I apologize.
For the microphone, I gave you some extra time. Um, any speakers against the motion? Councillor Moore?
Um, I'd also admire councillor Kelly's enthusiasm for the environment. Um, but I think, uh, another committee, uh, we will have sustainable living in the valley and part of our council plan is to do that. Um, was vigorous. Um, I think that's the way forward rather than spawning another separate subcommittee within council. Uh, committee, um, and efficient and effective in one sentence is a juxtaposition, just a little bit too far for me. Um, I look at the list here and I see carbon storage, um, no carbon in the air, no carbon dioxide, no life, no plants, no life. And I just think that's ridiculous. Um, to definitely take the carbon dioxide out of the air. Well, we all die. Uh, you have, you have to make a decision on where, where exactly, what is the optimum rate of carbon dioxide? Bear in mind that over the last, let's say fifteen thousand years, carbon dioxide levels have been much higher, wind has been much colder. Uh, regenerative farming, yep, that works in certain areas. Um, I don't recall usually not in, on the other side, semi-arid, we're a semi-arid desert here. Extreme weather, well, the weather's always been extreme. It has always been extreme here. Um, if you're a farmer, you run your business, it's a risk. Extreme weather is a risk. It has always been a risk. And even me, starting off as a sixteen-year-old and farming, the biggest risk was weather. Second biggest risk is commodity price risk. So it's always been there. To, to say this is something new and upcoming and emerging, it's, it just doesn't gel. It's, it's always been there. Um, renewables, yep, new way to do things. But, uh, another committee, I, I just can't see it. We've, you know, we've got members of the community who are in it and as I've just said, the sustainable living in the melody group is the way forward. For council to do it, uh, more resources tied up doing something that really, I can't see will, uh, benefit us greatly, um, driving electric cars, I've mentioned this before, if the CEO deems that it's economically viable and it's where, where tax pa- uh, rate payers will pay more, less money in rates to sporting the vehicle fleet. And if that can happen via electric, electric vehicles, great, go for it. But if we're gonna subsidize the elusive electricity to make a statement at the rate payer's expense, then no, I'm not there. I'm just not there. Uh, climate adaption and mitigation, let's just, to me, that's just greenwashing what we always do, you know, drainage. We've always gotta, we've gotta take that into account. If we call it climate adaption and mitigation, such as our drainage plan, and we go for a one in fifty event rather than a one in twenty. We've gotta take that into account. If we call it climate adaption and mitigation, such as our drainage plan, and we go for a one in fifty event rather than a one in twenty. Well, then we'll greenwash it and call it climate adaption mitigation, not just assessing the rea- the weather risk of a high rainfall event. Um tree canopy, yep, right tree, right place. Love it. The point is, we don't need a committee for it. You know, we can just have ongoing programs. Through our council plan, which we have, which we currently have.
Time.
Pests, yep. Me, he could go on with pests. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor McPhee, you wish to speak.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um look, I take on, I'm actually gonna speak for the motion in a roundabout way. It's um. Take on board your question to our director of um economic development about a committee being asked in the past. This motion is actually asking for the um investigate the establishment of a council committee. I'm looking at the possibility of maybe an internal committee, not an external committee, an internal committee. Where we already have Agenda Equity Action Plan Committee. We already look at youth policies to make sure they comply right across the municipality. Looking at vulnerable people when we're doing projects. We're looking at all these aspects internally anyway. So I would look at this as an internal committee, not taking outside people on board. And this is what we're investigating. I can see that this working to make sure. Councilors always, and big organizations always tend to work in silos. They are getting better at that sort of thing over the in the years. Coming improving as the years move on. But they still tend to work in silos. And we've all got to be responsible for climate change. We've all got to take a role in it, by all means. I understand that. Albeit, council's role primarily is roads, rates and rubbish. We tend to get away from that too much. And that's why I don't want to spend too much money on this sort of thing. But I could possibly see maybe an internal committee could be a good way to go in relation to this. And it would address the concerns councillor Kelly raised last time about the council plan. To make sure that we do consider climate change in everything we do into the future. And as to how that is established, well, that's what this motion is asking for it to do. Is consider it and investigate it. Not to establish it, but just to investigate it, the establishment of. And I think it's worthwhile to look at it as an internal committee ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Do we have any other speakers on the motion? Uh if not, councillor Kelly, you have the right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh thank you to fellow councillors for um commenting and speaking and expressing um their views. I really do. Appreciate um what everyone has said. And you know. Part of the difficulty here is um the narrative and understanding each other. And I think, you know, possibly. There's a bit of a lack of understanding of of and and I'm not saying that it's not my my um. You know, responsibility to be clear about what I'm what I'm trying to get at. But I do find it challenging with the limitations on time that we have in the chamber. Um and and yeah, pos- you know, I've done my best to try to um explain the 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 purpose of this committee. Um and it is just to investigate the establishment of a committee. Perhaps the the uh outcome of that would be that we don't. Establish one. But it would, I think, be a good exercise to look at what other councils have them, what do they do? Are they internal? Do they have an external? Community member on them as well. Um it can have benefits. There, we have lots of committees. There's the, you know. Um rail track committee, there's the agricultural committee. Um I don't think it's anything very extreme to have a committee that. Has a focus on environment, climate and sustainability, being strategic and stopping that silo effect, being more um. Efficient and effective in this area, assisting um our staff. And and although Mr. Hovden did recommend that we don't have one. I I still think that if we could investigate, uh have a report come on on this, um I think it's in our best interests. Um.
Time. Yep. Thank you, councillor Kelly. Uh. Sorry, mental blank. Uh I'll put the I'll put the motion out. Those in favor of the motion? Those against? And casting vote, I'm against the motion. Motion is lost. Uh notice the motion five point three, information for rural residential zone residents. Councillor Kelly, if you could read the, read the motion.
I'd like to move that a report come to council on what information exists and is available to prospective residents of houses in the farming zone.
So I have a second to follow the motion. Councillor McKay. Um do any councillors have any questions? I have a question for the Director of Development and Planning, because this would come under your directorate. What, whose responsibility is it? When somebody's purchasing a property to uh find out um any information regarding relating to that to that property? And where would they currently get that information from?
So generally, it's the principles that we operate under, a buyer beware. If people need to do due diligence, you know, look at the area the house surrounds. From a council point of view, we try and ensure that we cover any dwelling that's excised or any subdivision in the farming zone that creates a small lot. We try and cover. That off by requiring a section one seven three agreement, which exists on title, which notifies it from time to time, a resident of a dwelling. On a small lot or an excised lot might be um disturbed by noise or dust or odor. Um the hours of operation of a farming activity. So that's how we try and generally cover it. Um. Many years ago, the state had a series of pamphlets, um but they have, um yeah, they're hard to find.
Okay. And another question, just on the preamble, um says the the council sees the creation of more houses excised. From farmland. And I understand uh this is a bit of a question without notice. Um do we know how many excisions? We would have approved, for example, in the last twelve months?
No, I'm not able to answer that question.
That's all. Sorry, it was a bit of a question without notice, sorry. Uh question, councillor Moore?
Sorry, yeah, just I'm just thinking on the run. Um how, Mr. Granger, how many complaints have we had? Uh since you've been on board or is it recorded, uh say, in the last twelve months from uh residents in rural areas?
Yeah, again, I have to take that on notice. Um I'm not aware of any complaints in the last three months.
Yep. Thank you.
Question, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just you mentioned the one seven three agreements, which we put in there that when they get excised about the dust, noise, and all that in relation to farming zone. Those one two threes you mentioned are under the title. They get that information through their section thirty two, through the real estate agent. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, no other questions. Uh councillor Kelly, over to you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh look, um. This uh report would gather the information that exists. Um so that council can have it um to give to residents who it relates to. So. Residents who may be purchasing such properties or renting them. So buyer beware, of course. Um. But i- it would be nice if this kind of information was there. Um you know, it's sometimes difficult to navigate. Where to get information, do you go to the EPA or do you go to council? So I suppose we're doing a service here by um. Gathering what exists. Is it current? Is it adequate? Um is it accessible? Um is it, you know, digital or is it paper? Just just a bit of a gathering of what information is there. Is it accessible? Um and how how then council might use that for residents that it might be relevant to. Would we put it on our new website, for example? Um so it's a bit of a um exercise like that. Um I do feel that um, you know, personal experience, I once lived in Venebra. I rented a house out in the middle of the the grapevines out there. Um personally, I I loved living out there and I didn't have any problems. But. For renters, when you apply for a rental property, um I'm not presuming that no one here has rented, but I. I've probably rented over twenty houses in my life. So I'm a bit of a renter advocate for renters' rights. Um renters don't see. What's on the title. They just see uh the picture, a few words, you go and have a look at the house. You may not understand what it's like to live. Um or the 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 threats and impacts that you may experience living on in the rural zone. So. I I you know, I am keen to make this information available for those people who, you know, not everyone will care, but there's other. There's others who are sensitive to to chemicals, to lights. Um talking from personal experience again, when you're pregnant. Um you're very sensitive to getting your sleep, um too light, too noise, too chemicals. So some people will particularly. Need to avoid living in houses that say um have, you know, the say stone fruit next to them with the the sprays. Um so it's a right to farm thing. And it's keeping that balance between amenity impacts and adjoining agriculture. And just trying to prevent anyone having to um get upset, not enjoy their their lifestyle. Um so it's um being transparent and I think this would be a service to our community if we can make sure that there is that information there. And if it's not there, that we know that it's a gap, whether we um produce something ourselves or whether we seek to get that from DCA or somebody. But just to know it's there. Because we are sometimes um allowing excisions in the in the farming zone. Um and that this is what has um triggered me to to move this motion is that, okay, if we are doing that, then it's important to know that. Um information's there so that they can be um make decisions that can uh impact their lives. And prevent people being surprised and having to complain when they move in and find that the conditions are unsatisfactory. Um. So that that's the the purpose of this um motion. And I I hope to get support on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Uh councillor McKay.
May I may I ask a question of Ms. Granger?
Uh sure.
Yeah, um with that section with its one seven threes, and does that spell out that um a person living in the farming zone should expect. Those types of things?
Yeah, it does. I highlight that. And as councillor Kelly said, it's not available usually to renters.
Yes.
Um we have a residence kit on our website. Um so I don't know whether this sort of information could be built into that sort of information.
So I think.
Okay, so I'll get, I'll start, start, the question's been answered. Um so.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question down the line?
Sure.
It's just come up. Um just in relation to, because we're talking about farm zone here. We have farm zone right across our municipality that abuts residential zones anyway. And there's no buffer, is there?
Generally not.
No, so thank you.
Thank you. Um councillor McKay, if you could speak to the to the motion.
Yeah, I think what what this um report is, what this is aiming to achieve is that we have some consistent information that can be provided to residents that live in close. Very close proximity to sometimes intensive agriculture and to prevent conflict. So people move into a house, they're aware of what to expect. And that they cannot really complain. There's the those conditions are to be expected. So it's to create more, hopefully create more harmony and better understanding of. What that um property's situation is. It's not intended to um. Create conflict, but rather to inform people before they before they move there. And there are many people who do are very happy with those conditions once they, but they're. About moving into them with full knowledge of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKay. Uh do we have any speakers against the motion? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, we're getting into an area where um, as I said previously, and our motion had come up before, council's role is roads, rates and rubbish. Mainly. We do advocate in other areas, by all means, and we will continue to do that. But we're getting further and further away from our core functions when we start getting to this type of thing. Um people who are buying those properties, they've got to do their own due diligence in relation to where they're living. They know they're living in a um, moving into a country area. And there's likely to be farming nearby. The question I asked before is, this motion is about um excisions in um. Farming zones. Well, we have a lot of residential zones right next door of butting farming zones. So how far do we go with this? It's just, it's not our role. I think you've got to take the due diligence in relation to that. But councillors, we've got to take responsibility in this initially, in the very first place. We need to be strategic about appointing, approving those subdivisions in the first place. We're the ones creating the problem. So. You need to think, or we all need to think seriously and hardly about each case on its merits, as to whether it is appropriate for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Uh any other speakers in favor of the motion, against the motion? Councillor Young?
No, I was just gonna say, um just looking at this, um I think this could be very easily solved by saying. Um to the people that are looking at these properties, have you considered the issues of um having a residential place in a um farming zone? And these issues are. And they're all the same, like their noise, chemicals, maybe dust, you know, it definitely be done in. Two sentences, you know, something that's given to, instead of doing a great big report, I mean, it's been around for years and it's the same. As it's always been.
Okay, thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Moore?
I'd speak for the motion if I can, but I can't so team. Um. Uh and I can see in speaking for it, I'm in no way um advocating or signaling that um we're kind of contravening the planning scheme. Because the planning scheme, like in future decisions, um that's been put the states that uh excisions under twenty EPIs, uh in fact, believe. Um. Uh it's been a sign of the world we're living in, uh in that we have to tell people, um basically hold their hand, um there's so much of a gap between. City dwellers and what's actually what actually is the real world of the rural region and the areas. And the first things I did write down here were caveat into, buyer beware, due diligence, uh do your homework. Uh that still applies. Um. But the reality is, um and as mentioned here, the peri-urban interface, the interface of the the town and the county and the ru- rural areas, they are close. Um people do move, they will have a a mobile population. And um there's a constant turnover of the population. So they definitely need something. Either just as simple as on our website or um we're using with um. Yeah, um they have um my name, Salmon and Chute fraternity, um but just to inform people what what they're up for. Uh there are a lot of existing decisions. There was when I came onto council. There's a few more with the way it passed. Um. So there's there's three good reasons, um existing excisions, uh peri-urban interface, and uh just to reinforce uh anything that might happen in future damage. Uh so I think uh worthwhile, given the world we're living in, where the knowledge of our rural areas are is sparse and and getting sparser. That's a proper way. Um and people, you know, we didn't want to try and track people. We don't want to put them off. And but we just need to inform them of the realities. Of rural regional areas and what agriculture um does perform and and animal husbandry, but those those sometimes they smell and um. Uh work is done is noisy, uh it's dusty, uh just but people that you might get with this. Um frostbands make noises. We have that occasion. Complain about that in the areas, uh in in part, we just remember a lot for us. Uh.
Thirty seconds.
A very worthwhile, worthwhile uh motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Uh it's been a speaker against, so councillor Kelly, I'll give you the right of reply.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks once again to my fellow councillors. Um it does come up in our deliberations on um planning applications. Um this has come from that. Uh you know, information is is uh important. When people navigating this type of information, they do look to council to get information about um the community. So it doesn't mean that council has to produce this. It may already exist. It's just a matter of us um finding it and then using what already exists. But if it doesn't exist, that we uh either do it ourselves or um request some other authority to do it. So this report um will inform our next step. Um but you know, it 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 is important.
Um, but, you know, it it it's important um where we live in looking after people's physical and mental health, um, I think it is in our remit to do that uh in regards to community wellbeing. So um I'm hoping that this um will um add to that and assist that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kelly. Uh, I will put the motion, those in favour of the motion, those against. Comes down to me again, against the motion. Motion is lost. Moving on to section six, uh, do we have any foreshadowed items, councillors? If not, move on to section seven, urgent items not included in the agenda. Do we have any urgent items not included? Uh, so we'll move on to section eight, which is to consider and order on councillor reports. Councillor MacKay, you can go first today.
Oh, more than that. Uh, it's been, I've re- recently returned to my council duties and had a wonderful time welcoming the governor of Victoria to Robinvale. We had a lovely reception at Robinson Wood Homestead and then at the memorial park and planted a commemorative tree. Then moved on to Bandar Ben Olives, which was fabulous, followed by um the reception here. That was really wonderful. It was fabulous to meet the governor. She was very learned and as everyone noted, she listened a lot. And then when she spoke, she was uh a wealth of knowledge and perception. Um, also went the next, I've been that during that week to Tindindah Homestead at open day and it was absolutely so well attended. I was totally surprised. Uh, only surprised because the smoke on the water event was on the same day. So I just thought, like, it was obvious that that the community is really, really interested in that venue. And um, you know, venues, that's the word, that place. And it was a really lovely time. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved. It was uh really beautiful. There was music, there was food, the garden was gorgeous. Um, and I'm not sure of the name of the um uh First Nations group who uh have a a food stall, though I know the people, but the name, but that was also a great addition, really wonderful. Um, then the next, there wasn't another venue, but uh we attended a business break place meeting and all to one thing. Thank you.
Thank you councillor MacKay. Councillor Moore?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Uh, pretty sparse report. Um, Anzac Day dawn service, uh, of course, and subsequent march. Uh, governor's visit, uh, Rob- at Robinswood and Bandar Ben estate and then uh the the next morning at this um C U C university campus. Uh, ninth the fifth C B G A board meeting and on the fifteenth the fifth, the Vicred presentation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Moore. Councillor Young?
Thank you. Uh, councillor Nick, one's coming up on the board because I've just exactly remembered what was it. I'm not calibrated from here.
It'll be on your little screen.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah.
The other one.
Oh, this one, yeah, okay.
Microphone, councillor Young?
Um, yes. Sorry, I'm not very good today. Um, when I've been to several Mally C U C board meetings, um, which have been well attended and even though I haven't been at some of the events, they've had some great events. They've had um one for the, a social night for the students that have been enrolled. Um, and also some general meeting, um, standing there um with Rotary and some of the other places as well who I've had it reported back to me, B P W, some of the members there went there and they were just really impressed. So that's really good to hear. Um, activating the Swanhill Riverfront when um the um councillor, uh, the state, no, the federal person was here, I can't remember her name, Yana.
Senator Yana Stewart.
Yana came for that. And um and then um when the governor was here, we also, I went down to Lake Boger to um the um place at um the booze, um reception sort of thing that was held down there and that went really well. Um, the Anzac Day ceremony, I wasn't there for very long, but I did call into that. And um, yeah, generally the governor's visit events and that was about it.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor McPhee, did you have anything? I know you've been on leave, councillor McPhee, but did you have anything?
Oh, thanks, Miss Mayor. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the wider community, councillors and staff for their support and understanding through this difficult time. And there's a couple of events I've been to since, I'm back into the sort of it. And certainly coming all for full headfirst back into the community. And thank you very much for your understanding through this talk.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, look, um, one of the uh big things I binged for the month, um, well, our reporting period is five or six weeks because our April meeting was uh early because of um the mayor's visit overseas. So um on the twenty seventh of April, I went to the ALGAW meeting, which is the Australian Local Government Women's Association um conference. It was the annual conference in Warrigal, which is Kurnai country. Um, the the topic was resilience and rein- reinvention. We had the minister Melissa Horn uh give a presentation on local government reforms, local government uniform model code of conduct, improved governance and integrity, ongoing training, sanctions, disqualification, increased enforcement. She talked about the cultural review um for local government. She talked about the fair jobs code, um, the People Matter survey, um, and just how important women in local government are. She said that um we need to have, you know, a thousand women standing in the next day election to try and get up to the target of fifty percent women councillors. So um it was really great to have um have her at the conference and have access to to the minister and hear from her, um, because there is a lot of um things happening in this uh reform space for local government. There was also someone from Maddox, Kate Oliver, who talked about the reforms and the consultation paper. Dr Susan Carland was there. Um, she, her topic was now to have difficult, how to have difficult conversations. And that was um in very insightful. Kerry Wilson from the um place naming equity, she she runs a a campaign called Put Her Name On It, trying to get um more women, uh, women's names on um signs, um place names, um uh statues. Um, and I know Laura's presented that to us before, that that issue. Um, Dr Louise Marla was there talking about gravitas and and communication skills. Um, we had lots of panels of women, um, young women councillors talking, um topics, uh, some con- uh consecutive workshops on courageous conversations. Um, Mr Wayne Farnham, the MP for, a member for Narakan was there. He's, he actually stood in for Peter Walsh, who couldn't couldn't attend. And Michael Stefanovic, the local government inspector, also spoke at the at the conference. So I want to thank council for allowing me to attend the conference um and to have that access to the ongoing training as well as, um, you know, travelling in Victoria, looking at other places and seeing what they're doing. It's important. Um, I think it's an important instructional uh thing for a councillor to do um and to learn and expand our minds and and also feel a bit refreshed from heading to somewhere a bit uh greener than here. Um, so that was that. I I wanted to give it a report on that, which I feel like I've I've done now, but if anyone's got any questions. Um, ALGAW also runs.
Microphone, sorry. Just, we've just noticed. Don't start again, but.
I won't. ALGAW also runs, um, a, uh, they do, um, some, uh, assistance to local. It's not just for councillors, it's for staff as well, ALGAW. And they have some bursaries and scholarship programmes. So I wanted to talk to the, um, our staff about that if anyone would want to put in for that, um, scholarship. Um, other things I did, if you wouldn't um mind scrolling for me, uh, Sharon. Um, I must have had a lot of time off because I did, I did do quite a few things. Went to, up to Mordura to a Murray Darling Association forum, which was excellent. Um, I attended a few of the governor's things. Um, there was a Black Armada uh when Mudika came to Australia, the History of Us. It was, I was in the library for a couple of weeks um because and you would wonder why was a, uh, why was there a hmm an an exhibition about Indonesia here? Well, a man just after the war, um, a Chinese man died out at the lake. He drowned and under strange circumstances and he was advocating for the um the freedom of of Indonesia. So there's there's that link. So that's why it was here and I I went to the library and opened it. It was really good. Um, I also went to the Tindindah Homestead Open Day, um, went to the Sustainability Victoria Workshop that was put on by Slim. Um, I visited Youth Inc. I opened the Pregnancy and Early Years Expo at the Town Hall, which was excellent. Again, I think that'll become an annual event. Um, s- and then, um, I went to coffee with a councillor, with councillor Geoffrey, uh, last week on Thursday in Robinvale and that was good. We had quite a few people talk to us. Uh, there were a few people who wanted to stand for council and wanted to talk to us about um how you do that and what's what's involved. So that was interesting. Um, and Emma Wright came and spoke to us. Um, she's in the Robenvale Fire Brigade and she also works for um rural Royal Flying Doctors doing their transport project. Um, and Emma, I just wanted to bring up some of the things she said because it's a volunteer week from May twenty to twenty six. And Emma got me, got me onto the um Robinvale um Facebook page and she's put a few messages up. I I want to direct everyone to go and look at them. She's put a couple of messages up for volunteers. Um, and it's just incredible. She was telling me about her role during the floods up there in Robinvale um and how she took, you know, time off work to help the community. Um, and she described a bit about the community pulling together to deal with those floods. Um, and it was, it was just incredible and very um inspiring and and just so grateful to all the people who who volunteered during that uh emergency and to those people who do that ongoing volunteering for the for the um, for the Robinvale Fire Brigade and all the fire brigades we have in our municipality. Um, so yeah, to Emma and all the other volunteers, um, thanks to Emma for coming, talking to us. And, um, yeah, thank you to all the volunteers and I'm sure that's, um, the rest of the council agree with 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 that and and I hope that there's lots of things on this week that that celebrates all of our volunteers. That'll do.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Kelly. Uh, for my report, I'll I'll start by thanking uh councillors who filled in at various engagements and um some of you have noted them, uh, whilst I was away visiting our sister cities in uh Yamagata and Villas-Bretino. Um, and as well as celebrating the fortieth anniversary of the twinning with Robinvale in in Villabretino, uh, I did have the honour of attending the dawn service at the Australian War Memorial there which um was obviously very emotional and very moving. Uh, lots of governor visits and for the, I guess for the benefit of the community, it's worth noting that uh in discussions with the governor, you know, because we might question, well, what's the, what's the value of this visit? What are we going to get out of it? Uh, but the governor is a very well-connected lady. Uh, she hosts people from overseas, overseas delegations uh very regularly and also travels overseas on trade missions. So her visit to uh just one of our, one of our farms with uh with Cobram Estate, Bandar Ben Olives, uh absolutely blew her away. Uh, but also lots of the thing, lots of other things around our municipality and and what we have and what we have to to offer. Uh, the Country University Centre and its its uh role now in in education uh is is also, given that she's been a dean of Monash Uni, was also of great interest to hers. So I don't think we can underestimate uh the value that we can get out of visits like that. Uh, so yeah, so since being overseas, hit the ground running, there's lots of other other stuff there as well. Um, community meetings, uh openings, et cetera, et cetera. But uh I don't think we might need to, need to elaborate any further on. So, um, so thank you all for your, for your reports for uh the last five weeks or so. Uh, councillors, we're going to move into camera to deal with some items. Um, but for the benefit of the the public, um, in case you're wondering about item nine point one on the agenda, which which is a submission that council will make to the House of Representatives Standing Committee on Regional Development, Infrastructure and Transport, uh, an inquiry into local government sustainability. I just wanted to reassure the public that the the information that we're sharing um is not necessarily confidential in in nature. It's information that is contained within council documents, council budgets, et cetera. However, the reason that this item is being dealt with uh in camera is due to the confidentiality requirements of the parliamentary committee. And in their submission guidelines, they specifically state that submissions shall not have been published anywhere else. So I hope that clarifies as to why we are dealing with that item in camera rather than uh in the the, in the public council meeting. Um, having said that, could I have a motion, councillors, that we move into camera? Move councillor Moore, second to councillor McPhee. Those in favour? That's carried. We'll just wait till the uh online. Is ceased. He assessed. Declare the meeting closed? Declare the meeting close. Thank you at four nineteen PM.